We're going to reconvene our meeting. Could I, could I invite Liesl Mitchell to the table, please? Morning Liesl. Very good. Either one? You just need to press the button, the bottom in the middle of the microphone. You should come on red.
Does that look right? Thank you. Well, good morning, everyone. I'm Liesl Mitchell. The submission I want to make today is about two things: living in the city and moving around the city. A city is about its people, and so thank you for listening to one person's thoughts on living and moving around Dunedin. I grew up here, left and chose to return to Dunedin because I love it. And yet I'm becoming increasingly aware of how many things in the city are not great. While there are many good things, there are also things I'm very concerned about. I support initiatives such as the DCC want to keep the city attractive and interesting, build on successes and attract more working age people to the city. All great things, even if somewhat nebulous. In addition, though, there are promises of new work and projects so Dunedin continues to be a great place to live. All sounds good. But as highlighted by last week's weekend's front page of the ODT on Dunedin's housing crisis, is Dunedin a great place to live? With the emphasis on 'live', the annual plan information document has supporting development as one of the getting things done projects. And while I can see there is an effort to increase people to move to Dunedin, to visit Dunedin and to work in Dunedin, there seems to be a lack of focus or urgency around supporting the people who are existing residents. When we know there's going to be an increase in rates, it is difficult to feel good about paying more for other projects when housing, a basic human need, is under tremendous pressure. For example, we are building boutique hotels, talking about large hotel developments, and yet we are lacking basic decent housing for residents of Dunedin. While we see a huge increase in tourists, there is an equally shocking increase in homeless and disenfranchised people, Dunedin people. People are unable to afford housing. I know people who live in their cars. If this is living in Dunedin, and it is the reality for an increasing number, affordable housing is an issue that I want to draw attention to. While the information plan says there will be more people employed to support the development that is going on in the city, this actually implies to me that it is going to cost the rate payer more in order to provide the structures to create housing for people who are already in need and stretched. Basic human needs have to come first, or cities can't flourish. Dunedin transport is the other submission item I'd like to talk to. And while I know this crosses a couple of council, ORC and DCC, hopefully I'm talking to you. I use public transport or walking as my main form of transport, and I love the idea of a central city bus loop. That sounds amazing. However, a service that links the museum, hospital, bus hub and exchange does not sound practical to someone like myself. Meaning, a central city bus loop with these stops creates exactly the same problem that the bus hub has created, which is there is no way now to catch a bus along George Street to your town destination. I do not understand the new bus hubs' location outside of George Street, and even more so the lack of overhead covering or adequate lighting at night to guide people. Particularly people with mobility issues, people with young children or people who are older, the two to three block walk that is required to get from the bus hub to the main street with no overhead covering is not practical in most kinds of Dunedin weather. I just give the example of my parents who are in their 70s, own a car but prefer to take the bus as an environmental choice. They have frequently attended evening art, music and cultural events in the octagon. They support these things. Often having dinner close by before seeing a show then catching the bus home. They have commented the positioning of the hub now a few blocks away, the lack of shelter, the unpleasant walk in the dark from an increasingly empty octagon without that local bus traffic going through it now to the hub after the show. They are wondering if they now drive or perhaps stop attending as many shows, particularly in the winter. I understand the council wants to provide better transport options, which I totally support. And the desire to get more people using buses in Dunedin is also one that I support. However, the current bus options are frustrating and not providing people with the town destination points, particularly weather, shelter, that we all need. This also feels frustrating when tourist buses occupy the octagon and visitors are dropped off right in the middle of the city while Dunedin residents are dropped a few blocks down like second-class citizens. That's how it feels. In addition, while I do not agree with the idea of paying, I do not disagree with the idea of paying for parking and trying to increase public transport use. I like this idea. And even trying to keep more cars out of the middle of the city, I have seen people, myself included, getting increasingly angry about the lack of parking options without sensible public transport options as an alternative. And this is really talking about George Street. Increasing the cost of parking in the city and reducing parking space is only actually harming the ability to get to George Street and increase that traffic along the main thoroughfare. These changes need to be done simultaneously, parking and transport options, or phased in together in ways that are practical for people to use. Thank you for listening to me today.
Liesl, you're happy to take questions?
Sure, yes.
In that case, councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your submission. Two things. First of all, we are the wrong people to talk to about the cover issue on the bus hub. But I just wanted to clarify, are you aware that the proposal that we're discussing with, in terms of the bus loop idea, is for a smaller vehicle? We're discussing with the ORC and NZTA and ECA. It would run if what was suggested is supported down George Street because the bigger buses are coming inevitably out of George Street.
That would be great. I just read that it was those points, so I couldn't, I didn't see George Street as a part of it.
The detail of the proposal was museum reserve, Albany Street, George Street to the Exchange,
Great.
Queen's Gardens and the other key points back on the way back to the campus.
Okay. I wasn't clear on that. That makes a lot of sense, yes.
And that, that was proposed to be a smaller vehicle, preferably ultimately electric.
Sure. So what sort of timeframe would that be proposed within?
Like what? Well, I guess at the end of this consultation, these meetings, when we deliberate, we will decide whether the community supports that idea or not. And at that stage, we'll be able to progress the discussions that are happening with the other bodies, including ECA, who have another funding round that lines up perfectly for us.
Okay, well, that sounds great because I think at the moment, the way the hub is positioned, that actually would make perfect sense if you had something that was running regularly through the city. I can see the, the sense in that, but I guess it was just seeing those two things side by side rather than as separate things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thanks, Liesl. My is also a transport question again. As councillor Benson-Pope pretty much correctly reported, almost everything you presented to us today doesn't really sit with us. But we do have a new organi-, we, there has been at the operations level, a group that sat around and connected Dunedin for quite some time, and now there's some governance representation on it. But it's meeting about every three months. Would you consider that would be a good place for these kind of coordinated activities to occur? And then, how much would you like to know what happens in those meetings so that the public can be involved in any of those outcomes?
Look, I would love to be involved. I would love to know more about that sort of process. I think, you know, as someone that is educated, involved, interested in the city, able to access this information, I struggle to get the information I need to understand what's happening. And I know that's a thing that you're all struggling to work out how best to give the information to people in the city or get people involved. It's just not working still. So yeah, if there can be ways to be involved, I would love to be able to have my say, particularly as someone that does use public transport and likes to be able to walk around the city. I think this is an ongoing problem of engagement and, yep, I would like to be more better informed, yes.
So you're looking at better, maybe earlier involvement in some, when directions are being sent?
Yeah, definitely. Because I think a lot of the time, when, obviously, when plans are made, it's often done with the view of what is the most efficient way to get from A to B or how does this look sort of from the crow flies over, this would be the best way to do it. People that actually use, and I know this is what you want to engage with, people who actually use these processes, but it's often, it's often not the people who use them and need them that are, that are giving you the right, or giving you their information, so.
Yeah, and are you aware that there's an awful lot of regulatory activity that sits above both the ORC and the DCC that actually determines in some respects the outputs and the outcomes and often is not, you have like, it's often a three-year cycle. When, would you want to be involved at a point where in that cycle, the pains are being looked at and revised? And I guess to that extent, the ORC is about to go into another one with public transport, which the DCC has a role in, but is at this point not a major role. Would you like to see the DCC making, because it's an annual plan submission, the DCC making a submission to the ORC and making it clearer that you would potentially like a greater role for the DCC in this, given that all of the public transport happens inside our territorial area?
Definitely. And I think it would be clearer for the public as well. Because like I said, I didn't know who to direct this to. I was aware you had worked with the ORC on the hub or in support alongside, but it's difficult to know who to give that information to and then, you know, overhead coverings from bus hub to main street, who do I talk to about that? So, yes.
Great, thank you. Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. Now, now that you've answered the questions from councillor Benson-Pope about, and understand that the loop suggestion, I think what your submission is saying that, don't think it's just a daily thing where people drive into town or, but sorry, bus into town, need to go to meetings. But they were saying there's a real need at night to have that same sort of service as well. Now, we've had some submissions yesterday from the Arthur Street and City Rise Up groups about, and a number of others, suggesting that there should be other loops or a higher, the loops should actually include things like Moana Pool and the First Hill, really.
Right.
From your experience, and I, and maybe it's something you want to input later, is understanding what you would see as the daily demands and the benefits of some of those things, because they're not necessarily all services that have to run, and we'd look at the loop being a 12-minute one. But I'd be interested in your thoughts about when, from your perception, when some of those loops are most needed.
Sure. I think around school, school times. So those times when parents are dropping kids off at school, there may actually be better ways for kids to get to school using sort of mini loops, which would make a lot of sense and reduce some of the traffic. And traffic points that then cause problems for other people in the city. So the eight o'clock to nine o'clock, the, and that could also be for people getting to work, obviously. And then that three o'clock, four o'clock kind of loop. Because again, I'm aware with the changes to the bus that have taken place recently, I'm seeing school kids sort of having to gather in different places to catch the bus. It is changing the way that kids are getting to school and getting home from school. And potentially, if there were those systems in place, less parents would have the pressure of getting their kid to school before they got to work. There may well be a very efficient bus service that can just loop them in. Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you. Thank you, Liesl, for your presentation and for your engagement in the issues. I just wanted to ask, just to check that I understood what you were saying. So obviously, you're listening to the main decisions and announcements we're making on various things. And some of those through the media, and you're not necessarily getting all of that information, so I heard that. But are you also saying that in between those milestones, there's a lack of information in terms of telling the story? I've often said that, you know, we tell the story at the milestones, but we don't necessarily convey that we're beavering away in the background in between. Would that be the case, as you said?
Yeah. Look, I think it's such a difficult, such a difficult thing because the city has to be engaged with the governance of the city and the governance has to be engaged with the city. How you do that, I just don't know. I mean, I have conversations with taxi drivers that say, oh, what is the DCC even doing? And then we broke it down and said, well, we all know people who work in the DCC and in the ORC. We know they work hard. We know there's bigger structures. We know that it's hard to change things. So when you start to break it down, people do understand there's things going on, but no interest in really engaging with it, even though everyone's got something to say. I think, I, I wonder if actually, there's places where people work, people spend a lot of time in their workplace. Is it possible to have small engagement groups in workplaces even? Look, I don't have mobility issues and I find it a real pain, so I'm just guessing. My, my parents, they're both older, they're reasonably fit and healthy, but they are in their 70s and they say it's a bit of a push when you're just thinking you're popping into town just to walk that extra three blocks. I don't know if it's psychological, I'm not sure, but you don't actually feel like you're part of town. And I'm reasonably fit and healthy and I find it a pain. So I'm just saying, you know, mums with their push chairs, dads with their push chairs, people who have a little bit more, you know, of a mobility issue will not enjoy getting off the bus sort of three blocks down from wherever they want to go. And there are no stops between the hub and then Knox Church. So if you get off at the hub, then you've got to walk from the back of Farmers to the Meridian or, you know, wherever you want to go to the octagon. Or you then get on the bus and get off at Knox Church. So it really is a big chunk of town that's not getting access points. People will just stay on the bus and go home. They won't get off, so.
Actually, a question for Dan. Just this, can I ask a question just around where the loop is going? Like, does it go along where the bus hub is?
There's been a proposal, but it'll have to come to council.
Yeah.
And once it's supported in principle, the final details of that will have to come to council. There's been some suggestions for change, including Moana Pool, for example, yesterday was raised by a couple of people. So council will have to make a decision that if there's an agreement in principle, we'll progress the fundraising to ECA to buy the electric bus. And we'll come back here to talk about, okay, how do we structure that, where's the best route and so on, at frequency. All of those things yet to be decided.
Then I'll ask Liesl a question. Liesl, do you see it important that maybe, a suggestion is that the circuit bus actually goes along where the bus hub is to pick people up? Or can people walk to George Street and then pick it up? That's just a question.
I, I, I don't know. My understanding is that it could stop at the hub as well as going along George Street. But it, I think having those options, being able to connect in with the main bus route and then jumping on the city loop would make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Councillor Vandemus.
Regarding congestion which affects both buses and cars, especially at the pinch points of nine AM and five PM, do you think it would be helpful for council and perhaps the university as well, being the massive employers that they are, to introduce more flexi-time so that people weren't necessarily arriving just at nine and five or leaving at five? But say we're doing eight to four or seven thirty to three thirty. Do you think that would help some of the congestion issues that people are suffering?
I think anything like that where you actually change the routines so that not everyone is converging on points at the same time, of course, would help with congestion issues. I think in, yeah, I think probably having alternative ways of creating traffic flow, and that would be one of them, is always smart to think about. I think that Dunedin is becoming more and more congested, so being able to either adopt different routes for people to take, different timeframes, I think those things would help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liesl.
Thank you.
Our next submitter is John Burton. John, welcome to the table. The floor's yours.
Good morning and thanks for hearing me. I've asked to speak to you about the Fraser's Gully walking track, which has been officially closed since the storm of July 2017. I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I know that a number of people, a good number of people, share my views and that some have made submissions. What I've heard so far about plans for the track have both been contradictory and confusing. Firstly, this track is regularly used by casual walkers and by people moving between Dalziel Road and Kaikara Valley, including school pupils. I'm 83. I use it nearly every day. It's one of the most beautiful, well-formed and accessible tracks in the city. I was up there 20 times in April and I was up there yesterday. It's a little muddy at the moment, but not too bad. Now, it concerns me that the track has been closed for so long. 22 months is too long. I rang the DCC Parks and Reserves in July last year when the track had already been closed for a year. I was told that a geotechnical report said it should be scrapped as it's a problem which is likely to recur. And that consideration was being given to developing a track up the other side of the stream. I was also told that it was a health and safety issue. I got the impression rightly or wrongly that the person I was speaking to hadn't spent much time in the area himself. Now, I'm not in a position to challenge the geotechnical report. However, I'm mindful of the fact that the Bannockburn Hall was red-listed and marked for demolition following a geotechnical report after the Christchurch earthquake, which indicated that there was a high risk of it collapsing. Three years later, a report by Hadley and Robinson engineers said that it met 80% of the national building standards. The hall has since been upgraded and reopened. Now, as far as the health and safety issue is concerned, to the best of my knowledge, there was a single issue which got some publicity when a man in his 70s fell down the bank during the short period the track was opened in 2017. Now, this could have happened anywhere. The risk of falling on this track is probably less than on the recently reopened Ross Creek track, which I've been around quite recently too. And as far as I know, there have not previously been any health and safety issues with the Fraser's Gully track. Now, on a later phone call, I talked with a different person. I was told that there were no current plans to open the track because of instability above the current slip. I was again told that consideration is being given to building a new track up the other side of the stream, but that nothing would be done until July 2019, the beginning of the next financial year, as there was no finance available. I'm no expert, but in my view, and several others agree with me, this would be an unnecessary and expensive use of rate payer's money. I've heard the figures quoted of a maximum of about 20,000 to clear up the present slip and several hundred thousand to build a new track. The Fraser's Gully track is a very old established one. Since the work carried out by a community-minded anonymous person at the end of last year, the track is being used frequently. In around 10 to 15 minutes last weekend, I counted 14 people, adults and quite young children, using the 500 metres of closed track between the first slip and the bridge. There's been a very small loss of track into the stream at the higher slip, but it's surely not a major issue to fix either by rerouting the track slightly or by repairing the bank. My suggestion is that just remove the bottom slip debris and finish the job the unknown person has largely done at the second slip. A truck and an excavator can be taken right up to the first and larger of the two slips. And I should have brought a excavator, but it's probably no higher than that line across the middle of the board there. So a truck and excavator, I say, could be taken right up and it could be done and it wouldn't take very long at all. It's not a slip of the west coast or Kaikara proportions. Some further improvement in drainage may also be necessary. The whole job would cost, as I said, a few thousand dollars at most. Now, if there is a further slip, and we need to remember that these two previous closures of the track have resulted from major storms, one's supposed to be the worst storm to have hit Dunedin in July, then just clear it again. It's not a big job. So to summarise, in my view, this popular track has been closed for an unnecessarily long time. I just don't wear the DCC arguments I've heard concerning its future. There's no need to build a new track up the other side, which wouldn't have anything like the appeal, I think, of the current track. And I reckon the finance required to fix the current track is minimal. Thank you.
Questions, councillors? Councillor Elder.
Thank you, Chair. You mentioned lots of people using that track. You saw 14. How many people up on the hills use that track, say, on a regular basis?
Well, I, I don't know. I'm talking just about a very small period of time. There are people, virtually every time I go up there. A lot can't go up there now because, notice at the front of the track, as I said in my submission, it says, 'track closed', but it says, 'interact your own risk'. And I think a lot of people probably choose not to, to go up because of that. But you see children, prams, bicycles, a lot up there.
So there's a wide variety. Older people, bikes. I've been up that track and indeed it is a huge asset to Dunedin. It's got beautiful pools and it's got beautiful bush and a lovely stream. So, you know, I can see why the community would want to use it.
Councillor Lafisso.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Burton, for your, your submission. And I just, my home backs onto the Fraser's Gully Reserve and I just want to support your statement that a replacement track on the other side of the stream would be nowhere near the standard of the current track. So I just want to endorse them. Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
Can I just ask a question of staff as it relates to Mr. Burton's submission? It's an infrastructure spending question. It's a return on investment and a health and safety issue. I'm, I'm aware of what you are submitting and I know that that's pretty much, you've fairly accurately described the council's position on that right now. Can you give us a head sign on where, it's a return on investment question. So what's been raised today is that it might be, say, a $10,000 or $20,000 repair and maybe every five years we'll replace, we'll be facing one of those versus a X hundred thousand dollar answer on the other side of the valley where the geotech report says it's potentially more stable. Have I got that right? And then, and then can you comment on that, please?
Yeah, through the chair. So you have got that right. This is not in my department, but I have been to the site and I've been there with geotech engineers. And my understanding is, is that we are currently looking at a temporary fix to get the track formally opened. I've just done some stormwater calcs to make sure that temporary fix doesn't get eroded away at another stormwater event. And I'm going to meet with the parks team to discuss the stormwater aspect of it. And I think that's next week. And it is around that sort of $10,000 to $20,000 mark to create a temporary fix and make it more accessible for prams and cyclists. Because I know at the moment the step's been cut in there and it's a little bit challenging. So the, the health and safety issue, so there is still a risk of more slips. So the health and safety issue is more in wet weather events if people are using it and another slip comes down. So that's sort of some of DCC's concern. And so we talked about closing the track at significant wet weather events and having it open. So that's my understanding where we're chugging at at the moment. And then we would have, so there is no budget to take it across the stream and it's not for staff to set budgets, it's for council. So there has been talk about taking a permanent fix back to council for discussion where we cross the stream and avoid the slip-prone area. But, but there is a plan in place to, to do the temporary fix.
Yeah, as I say, I've got no evidence that anybody has been damaged in any way by slip. I mean, you're not going to be out in slip weather.
No, agreed. Agreed.
I just want to finish that up then. So am I correct basically in saying that there's, that basically the track looks like it probably is going to get repaired in the not-too-distant future? That the health and safety may result in maybe watching the weather and putting some notice up to close it during wet weather events? And obviously, Mr. Burton suggested that probably won't affect that many people anyway. But the real one is that we won't be able to get funding into the parks and rec budgets until probably the next long-term plan, which would be 2021. So anything in between would have to be entered and measured based on the budget we've got right now. And that staff are, am I right in saying that staff are heading towards basically trying to keep that track? and that staff are, am I right in saying that staff are heading towards basically trying to keep that track open?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Councillors, we will now adjourn for ten minutes. We should be back here at ten fifty. So I'll move that we adjourn. Executive Councillor Vandibus, all in favour? Against? Carry.
We will reconvene, our next submitter has not arrived yet. So my suggestion is that we step down to the submission from Archives and Records. So welcome, gentlemen. If you, whoever is going to speak, or if you're both going to speak, just notice there's a little button on the microphone in front of you, and you press that, you'll see the light on the microphone go on, and that will mean that we can hear you.
So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much for hearing us. My name's Peter Miller. This is Stuart Strawn. We're both some professional archivists with long experience. I retired as the original archivist in Dunedin after twenty-two years. Stuart was a senior archivist at Archives New Zealand in Wellington, and also as a former librarian of the Hocken Library. We would like to talk to you yet again about the state of the preservation and housing of the council's archives in the basement of Civic Centre. This is the third time we've submitted on this matter. We put in a lengthy submission to the long-term tenure plan last year, and we were very disappointed that no provision was made.
Four thousand metres of archives there in total, but that was maybe a bit more now. About a year ago, I did have a look round down there, and I was pretty horrified by what I saw, although from comments I'd heard from other researchers, I wasn't too surprised. And in fact, I have my notes from my visit that time. There are pipes there, overhead pipes, sewage, stormwater, there's un-